This is Purpleish from CPR News and the Colorado Capital News Alliance, a show about Colorado politics and policy. I'm Benta Berkland. The 2025 legislative session may be in the rearview mirror, but we still have a lot of lingering questions and conflicts, like what's next for Colorado's controversial artificial intelligence law? Will lawmakers take action before it takes effect next February? What about federal spending cuts? Will state lawmakers have to return to Denver during the summer break to absorb changes from Washington? And as people in Colorado politics are always wondering, where is Governor Jared Polis on all of this? We've talked a lot about Polis on Purpleish this year, which is why we thought after all of that Polis talk, it might be nice for you to hear directly from the governor. And to do that, we're once again breaking the Purpleish mold with a recording from a live event hosted by our Colorado Capital News Alliance partner, The Colorado Sun. The Sun recently held a legislative wrap-up discussion with Polis and State House leaders at the University of Denver. And in this episode, you're going to hear excerpts from those conversations, starting with the governor. They started off by talking about the governor's relationship with state lawmakers and the Democratic-controlled legislature, which this year seemed increasingly willing to push back on the governor's priorities.
You didn't get all of your agenda done this year. You did get some key parts, but with one more year, at least one more session as governor, and a lot left on your policy agenda, I wonder how you're going to repair that relationship to get what you want done in your final year.
Well, I think we have a great relationship. I mean, it's obviously, you know, different folks, even from when I first started. So, and obviously Speaker McCluskey is here, but we worked with Speaker Becker and then Speaker Garnett, and now Speaker McCluskey we get to work with for two times. And then Senate President Steve Fenberg, and now James Coleman, and Dominic Brano, Robert Rodriguez, so many different folks. Probably the hardest thing we did in that time is when we had all the federal aid money that we had to figure out what to do. It was really hard because there was not a state procedure for doing that. It was sort of in not, it was outside the budget, but it wasn't inside the budget. And we just, we had to really convene and figure that out. And we did that, like, we got that done, which was amazing, effectively well, great investments for our state. This session, our priorities, housing, and we were very successful, right? So you remember the session two years ago when we tried to put everything in one bill didn't work? This year, we had many bills, and basically all of them except for one made it on housing. I've signed a number of modular housing reform. We signed the funds from Treasury buying bonds to construct them up in the high country today. We did smart stair reform, which took us two years, didn't make it last time, got it this time, and a number of others. So we're continuing that work and, you know, in response to, of course, one of the biggest concerns people have, cost of housing, and then public safety is the other big one. So really, the things we were looking at in public safety did make it through, and along with the successful implementation of Proposition 130.
With one year left, though, I know you oftentimes say that some of these big ticket items take more than one year, but with one year left, I wonder how you're going to try and persuade the legislature to do things like privatize pinnacle assurance. I know you didn't get what you want on tip wages. Labor Peace Act sounds like it's going to come back. We've talked about the veto. AI didn't get done. YGBI didn't get done. Property reinsurance. These were big-ticket items that you wanted this session, and I wonder, you know, what you chalk up the failure of those two? Because what I'm hearing from legislators is they felt like they wanted to push back on you a little bit this year.
Well, I was surprised that they didn't take action on reducing homeowners' insurance rates. That one surprised me because going into session, there was a lot of interest in it. And I still think there was. In fact, I think it probably majorities in both chambers wanted to do it, but the way the process works, it just wasn't able to happen. Obviously, we are going to, we look at all the costs for homeowners. So that's why we remember we did property tax. Property tax is a cost. So is homeowners' insurance. So is the need to build more homes. So like, we just look at holistically all of the costs that are associated with housing people have. And homeowners' insurance is not, you have to have, if you have a mortgage, you have to have it. And so it's not discretionary, and absolutely that we need to take action in there. And that, you know, one thing I had to learn about as we were looking into this is actually, you know, people think fires, that's certainly a driver. The bigger drivers are actually hail damage. So it's about, of the increases we've seen, it's about 70% of that increase is hail, the other 30% is fire. So we do have strategies for both. Obviously, we're going to continue that work. For hail, it's actually simpler in that people need hail-resistant roofs. And so as we replace roofs, especially the eastern end of the metro area, we need to do that with roofs that won't have to be replaced in three years or five years again because of hail damage. Fire is much more complicated and, and obviously challenging with the increased risk from climate change and demographics. But we have lost insurers from many wildlife urban interface markets, and we do need a plan to bring them back.
I want to talk a little bit about AI. That was obviously one of the things on the list of things that didn't get done this session. And when that bill was pooled in the Senate Committee, you sent this letter, you know, with some of the top Colorado Democrats, Phil Wiser, Mike Johnston, Michael Bennett, Joan Agus, Brittany Pedersen. I wonder, you know, if you felt like you needed kind of their firepower because you thought lawmakers weren't taking you seriously on the need on that bill? Like, why did you bring those folks?
You know, frankly, it was actually, I wouldn't even say we brought them together. They were as eager to say stuff even without me. I was, I joined them. I wasn't going to join them if we did something, but I joined them. So it wasn't really us. We didn't go to them and say, you need to do this. They actually, and I, you know, whoever, wherever it started, I mean, we sort of came in and decided to sign last, frankly, of those folks because we were still working legislatively. I mean, I think everybody who just looks at Colorado says, we want to be an innovative state. We want to be on the forefront of positive AI use in our lives. Many of us use it personally, but this was more in the broader sense. So there's some areas of that bill that we need to get fixed. And I thought we, you know, I, we did agree with, I had a letter with Robert Rodriguez saying, here's the things we're going to do. And some of the big ones include making sure the developers have the responsibility, not what we call deployers. So just because you use AI, you don't know what's in it. You can't be expected to. But whoever codes the AI, that is the response, should be the responsibility for, in this case, making sure they are not discriminatory. So we have several paths on that. I mean, there is the possibility, you probably saw this, that the federal government could do a state, a moratorium of states doing this. That's, that's fine. Frankly, if you saw my signing letter on that in the first place, I said, the federal government needs to do this anyway because it's not any good for 50 states to have 50 different, different compliance systems for AI. It's a nightmare. It's more important to get it even uniform than entirely right. Like, I would argue the EU doesn't have it exactly right. In many ways, they overregulate AI, but at least they're uniform. You can do the same thing in France and Italy and Spain. We are going down a route that's very dangerous if we don't, if we don't figure that out.
So let's stick with AI a little bit more. You know, you have said that you support this federal moratorium push by Republicans in Congress. I think that's an interesting thing that we could probably talk about because it doesn't really seem, seem like you to support, you know, a federal intervention on a state issue. But, you know, this, this is, Colorado has its AI law. It's going to take effect in February 2026, barring a special session or, you know, action being taken in the first days of the legislative session next year. But I think we can both see why that would be problematic. Companies are going to have to prepare and gamble for whether or not that's going to happen. Obviously, this has been kind of a fickle policy in terms of what goes on. So, you know, are you willing to let this take effect or are we going to have a special session?
Well, no, I think in practice, you're right. You touched on the two possibilities. Either, either it would have to be delayed a year during a special session or, or addressed on the content issues. But that's harder in a special session. I think people want the general session to work on the content of it, but at least delayed. Or, as you said, an agreement to do that in January. I mean, people would have to be clear that that's what they wanted to do, and the industry and others would have to know that. You know, so those are, those are the possibilities that I see. The third one would be a federal, a federal moratorium. We wouldn't have to do anything.
Are those conversations starting now about fixing it early next session or having a special session? Like, what, where?
We haven't, we haven't discussed that. I mean, I'll ask the speaker what she thinks, but I don't know. I mean, but those are, those are the two I see. I mean, either an agreement to do it in January or, you know, there's other reasons there might be a special session, and I think it's something that would certainly be part of a special session if we had to have one. Primarily, that would be fiscal matters, and you want to get to those. But that would be, that would be the impetus behind the need for a special session if there is one, would be a change, a major change in the fiscal situation because of federal policy. The biggest thing we're watching is whether they slash Medicaid in a way that we have to change the policy here quickly because that's not something that we can do administratively.
We will get to Medicaid in just one second, but I want to stick with one more tech question. I wonder where you're at with the potential veto of the rideshare safety bill. Obviously, this was something that was talked about a lot at the end of session. Your office expressed a lot of concerns about where the policy ended up. Called our Public Radio, our partners reported that Uber says it's going to leave the state if that, if you sign it into law. Are you going to veto that bill?
Well, I don't have it in a scoop for you right here, right now, Jesse. We're evaluating all the bills. We were very consistent during the process on that one. Our Department of Transportation testified in opposed position. We also did provide, at several points during the process, language that would have made the bill acceptable to us that was not included in the final bill. So we're evaluating that. I certainly wouldn't want to take any action that would lead to major rideshare programs that employ tens of thousands of people and other people relying on for safe passage leaving the state. So obviously, you know, that would be one of the factors we consider.
It kind of sounds like you made up your mind on this one, though. What do you need to evaluate in terms of, to make a decision to sign it?
Well, there were a lot of amendments that were run in at the last minute that, you know, we, we, literally, we didn't even see until, I think, we're talking, you know, what, eight, nine days ago. So we're just looking at the final, we're going to look at the final product.
Okay. So I promised Medicaid talks, so let's, let's talk Medicaid. Obviously, you know, you have said, and lawmakers have said, that if the federal government, if Republicans in Congress cut Medicaid spending, we're going to have to probably come back for a special session. Have you started to think, though, about where the state would make up the difference? And would the state even backfill it or would we just have to contend with those cuts?
Well, the short answer is no. We can't. We can't do that. We don't have the ability to backfill. I mean, we'll try to find, you know, prioritization of resources. So here's why. So the federal government fiscal year, they start October, they start their years October 1st. We start ours July 1st. So theirs ends September 30th. So if they take action in, for instance, July, or it goes into August, whenever they take action, they will likely, well, we don't expect that Medicaid cuts will be front-loaded. They'd probably even be worse in out years. Something's probably going to be cut in the middle of our fiscal year. And so that is why it's unlikely, if it's large, we would be able to wait and then do the budget for the next year. Lord knows that'll be harder, too, but we'd likely have to do it in this year. And yes, if you know the state budget, there's not the ability to backfill. It's going to be a very challenging discussion, and we don't know what the federal government's going to do. So we haven't, we don't, there's not a plan for it yet. We don't know exactly what, what form it will take. But our levers here would either be, you know, partially reducing the size of Medicaid expansion, meaning people would lose coverage, and/or reducing the benefits that people have. And I would add that this adds cost to everybody who buys commercial insurance. If people lose Medicaid, there's cost shifting on, they still get the care, they get cost shifting onto those who pay private insurance. So it would likely lead to increased insurance rates as well.
Are you guys looking at where, you know, those benefit cuts might happen? I mean, you're not planning yet?
Yeah, I mean, we have, we certainly have some that are easy, but they don't add up to enough. Easy in the sense that we actually proposed them and the JBC didn't take them. So we absolutely have, you know, 40, 50, 60 million, 80 million that we could, we could, we think, do easily if they agree. But unfortunately, that's not the level of magnitude we're talking about. We could be talking about a billion. So that cuts very close to the bone. It's going to be gut-wrenching to have to make those decisions. It likely would have to be some combination of, I hope not, you know, we're not alone in this, by the way. Every state is going to go through this. But all the states that have the Medicaid expansion, if that's one of the things that they reduce the funding match for, we will have to likely look at reducing the size of who we have expanded Medicaid to. Separately, we will have to look at the suite of services, and certainly some of the things we've added as benefits over my tenure as governor would likely have to be rolled back, and then very likely other things as well. So those will be the very tough decisions, why I've talked about this a lot. If the federal government cuts Medicaid, that will directly lead to increased costs for everybody in commercial insurance, hundreds of thousands of Colorados being thrown off of their plan, and people not having access to the benefits that they've had over the last few years. So all of those things are going to happen.
As we heard there, Polis believes the state won't be able to backfill lost federal Medicaid money if Congress does follow through on proposed cuts to the program. Even without federal Medicaid cuts, though, Colorado still faces a tight budget. Republicans say a lot of this is just a priority problem. The state is trying to spend too much on too many things. However, Democratic lawmakers blame the situation on constraints in Colorado's constitution, which we'll hear more about next. This is Purpleish from CPR News and the Colorado Capital News Alliance. Let's get back into it with the state constitutional amendment we talk more about than any other on Purpleish, and that's the Taxpayers Bill of Rights, or TABR. If you're a Purpleish diehard or nerd, spicy meatball, if you know, you know, this is probably old news to you. But just in case you're a bit rusty or it is new, here's TABR 101. Colorado voters passed this amendment back in 1992. You can think of it as a giant bundle of rules for how the state handles taxes and spending. One of the biggest things it does is set a limit on how much the state can spend annually. That cap goes up each year by inflation plus population growth, and money that comes in over that amount has to be refunded to taxpayers. The idea is that this hard limit will keep the state from overextending itself. The other big thing TABR does is require voters to approve any tax increases, and this provision is pretty popular with the public. But many Democrats at the state Capitol have been really frustrated by TABR, especially that growth cap. They've tried over the years to get voters to change the rules of TABR, most recently with Democrats' giant Prop HH proposal. Now, that failed resoundingly across the state. Similar types of efforts have also generally failed, and that's where we pick up the Colorado Sun's conversation with Governor Polis and the future of TABR.
Do you think that Democrats should try again to eliminate the cap or have voters just said, you know, stop doing that?
Well, first of all, I don't want to, you know, the cuts to healthcare are not because of TABR, they're because of the federal government and Congress and President Trump cutting Medicaid.
Sure, but the state's ability to backfill.
But we already only get 90 cents back on every dollar we send to Washington, and that's okay. You know, again, the states that get more than a dollar back are poorer states. I understand that. But this will be even worse for Colorado if now we're getting 82 cents back on every, you know, dollar we send. So I want to make sure you understand, this is a very different issue. If they cut Medicaid, it doesn't matter. Even if you didn't have TABR, you'd have, you'd have the very similar conversation here. In fact, our-
You'd have a few extra billion dollars.
No, not billions, no. I mean, first of all, I mean, we, if there's recession, there won't be any TABR surplus at all. But I don't have the numbers in front of me. I believe the recent one is something like 400 million-ish. Yeah, 400 million surplus. So, and yet the Medicaid cuts are going to be at the billions. So TABR, so the, the one thing that is referred to the ballot this November would be allowing the state to use the extra money collected for school lunches to be deployed. I support that. That was, you know, similar to when marijuana came in over the projections, when nicotine came over. We often have to go back and ask for more. So that's on the ballot. I support that. When I look at where we've been successful with ballot reforms and TABR, Prop 123 passed. It was a discreet ask, it was a certain amount of money around a priority people deeply cared about. I think something around education that was targeted in a certain amount would also have a lot of appeal to people. But no, I think clearly the voters don't want to get rid of caps or do something that's larger than that. They rejected that a number of times.
Okay. One more, I just want to point out, too, that one, part of the reason the TABR surplus isn't as high as it has been in previous years is that Democrats have done a lot of tax expenditures. So that has cut into some of the, the cap excess that we've had, just to be fair.
Well, it all gets refunded some way, Jesse. So I mean, there's, you know, whether it's, there's six tier, one tier, three tier income tax cuts, sales tax cuts, tax credits for low income. So those are all mechanisms that it legally gets returned to people with. We have, we, as one of our priorities, wanted to cut taxes. There is an income tax piece that likely won't be triggered next year because it won't be high enough. It is triggered this year. So the income tax rate is 4.25% instead of 4.4%. But if there's not enough of a surplus, that's not triggered. So there's a variety of mechanisms to refund it, and we also wanted to make sure we had some trouble, potential trouble, that they also have to pass not only state legal compliance, but also IRS compliance. That was another level that we had to make sure we, that these, that these tax refunds wouldn't in fact be taxed by the federal government.
Sure. So on TABR, you know, it sounds like you're opposed to a cap. You said in the past that you don't, you don't support eliminating voters' ability to weigh in on tax increases. So what do Democrats do on TABR? Do they do nothing? Do they ask for tax increases?
Well, if they want, if we want to win the ballot, again, I think the path is clear. It's just, it's not necessarily one that is taken by legislature. I think a discreet ask around something that people value. And I look at what people value, education, housing, healthcare, around those three. A discreet ask, meaning maybe you're asking for 50, maybe you're asking for 120. What was Prop 123? It was about 100 million a year, I believe. So a certain dollar amount, they can only use it for that, and it's one of the things people want. And I think that formula worked on housing. I think it's a reasonable formula. It would have a decent, no, when I say a decent chance, it doesn't mean it's definitely going to pass, but I mean, if I was designing something to win, I would say, why don't we do 100 million for teacher salaries? That might win, you know, and would be good policy.
Polis and Jesse also talked about the Labor Peace Act. That's something else we've covered a lot on Purpleish. In case you're not familiar, this is Colorado's law that requires two elections for a workplace to fully unionize. So that first vote is whether to unionize at all, and the second vote, and it requires three-quarters support, is whether the union will be allowed to collect fees from everyone in a workplace, even people who aren't union members, for things like collective bargaining. And it's that second vote that really gives unions power. Democratic lawmakers want to eliminate the second step in this union process, but Polis said from the start he wouldn't support that. He thinks there should be a high threshold before fees are deducted from everyone's paycheck. And just a day after this conversation with Jesse, Polis did exactly what he said he would do, and he vetoed the bill.
So everybody knew where we were at on this, and we're in a place that I'll talk about here briefly. I support making it easier to, to, we have the, first of all, the process of unization is overseen by the federal board, so that that doesn't change. But the process of dues deduction, we need to modernize in our state. Yes, we've had a Labor Peace Act for 83 years. We need to make it easier to have a second election. I think there's agreement on that, even broad agreement that we should have a way of, if there's enough support, why put the business and the workers through a second election? Why, why have two if there's enough support and we can show that in the first election? So we should do that. But I've also told the folks in unions, I support that Colorado is a Labor Peace Act state, meaning we are not a right-to-work state, we are not a closed-shop state. We are a hybrid state, and my commitment is to maintain that hybrid status. And so all of the negotiations agreed, occurred within that. Labor, while they would like to no longer be a Labor Peace state, they understood where we were, and they said, great. We, not great, but they said, we're willing to talk about having to bypass and reducing the percentage and not eliminating it altogether. That was a big concession because they obviously rather would want to get rid of it altogether. Business would rather not be having this conversation at all, but they also came a long way in the percentages. They, they basically said, we are okay with the concept of a bypass. We didn't quite get there, and then what the percentage would be on the second election. So we think if there's a replacement, again, we've been very clear, it needs to be one that is stable. The stability is inherently good, and, you know, maybe not aiming for 83 years, but I hope if we could figure something out, it'll last 10 or 20 years.
Well, let me, let me boil down the fundamental question there, though. It's, it's Democrats in the legislature feel it's going to be politically damaging for you if and when you veto this bill. Do you think that this is going to hurt your future?
No, it would be politically suicide if I were to sign the bill because obviously I said we were going to veto it. Labor knew when they introduced it where we were. So, I mean, my governorship would be over if I were to sign it, and I'm sure they understand that.
All right, last question. I know I've asked you a lot of times if you, if you're going to run for president, and you don't really answer that. So I'm not going to ask that again, but I will ask you, would you rather be president or a cabinet secretary?
Well, a cabinet secretary for President Trump right now? I would not rather be that, no.
How about for a future president, a Democrat?
Well, I love Colorado here, and, you know, our kids are 10 and 13. I mean, I don't, I really don't have any plans to, to leave our state.
All right. Well, thank you, Governor. I appreciate your time this evening, and yeah, thank you for joining.
From the governor to the leaders of each legislative chamber. For this conversation, Jesse spoke with Senate President James Coleman. He's a Democrat from Denver, and he just wrapped up his first session as the Senate's leader. Jesse also spoke with the House Speaker Julie McCluskey. She's a Democrat from Dillon, and this is her third session homing the House. He started by asking them about the legislature's relationship with the governor. Speaker McCluskey acknowledged there's been conflict between the two branches of government, but she said that's to be expected. She went back to two years ago when lawmakers, on the final day of the legislative session, shot down Polis's big effort to reform land use and zoning statewide.
This isn't the first year where we've had conflict. I think maybe the difference is how visible it might be. You know, I, the year that Senate Bill 213, the big land use bill, the, the year that that bill did not succeed, there was a great deal of tension within the body, whether that was the right policy, if we were moving in the right direction, and of course, the relationship with the governor.
McCluskey's worked with Polis longer than a lot of lawmakers. She actually came into office the same time as he did.
What I, you know, I appreciate, I just finished my seventh year, I have one year remaining, is that my relationship with the governor has evolved over those years. I better understand his perspectives. I think members of the House certainly have grown to understand his perspective, which is a very clear point of view on certain topics. And so, you know, we finding in our maturity, maybe, finding our voice and better articulating what we want and refining policy, policy that has been in the hopper or in the pipeline for a while. So I, I have said this before to reporters, I don't think either of you, but I wish there were news stories about our great collaboration. The stories where we're all getting along and doing good work, bipartisan or otherwise, but we bring forward policy and there's a celebration because there are so many more stories like that where we are working well together. And in the world of politics, we don't hear a lot of happy stories.
Hey, I want to note, we do cover happy stories sometimes. But let's return to the conversation now with a question from my editor at CPR, Megan Verlee. She was also on stage. She pointed out that Democratic leaders this year could have avoided what turned out to be a very public showdown with Polis, and this was after he vetoed a bipartisan social media bill. Democratic leaders could have delayed that bill as it moved through the legislature. They didn't do that, and that set the stage for this showdown. She asked Senate President Coleman about that.
So speaking about public tension, that was a big moment of it. Why not hold off on signing it or hold off on bringing it to the floor to not have that moment? Why did you put the legislature in that position this year?
Yeah, look, I would just say really quickly, and we, I believe Speaker and I share the same philosophy. We understand, we want to work in partnership with the governor, but our responsibility is to our chambers, our responsibility is to our caucus. And so we want to support our members and getting their bills passed. As you all know, we each get five bills that must be heard, must have a committee hearing, and have a fair legislative process to get through. I dare not try to jeopardize that process. If my members do the work, they get their bill in committee, and they debate that, and it has the votes to pass, great. If it doesn't, it's going to die in committee or die on the floor. And so I'm really grateful that we have both strong House and Senate chambers that work together on policies so that when we get that to that place, our concern is less about, together on policy, so that when we get that to that place, our concern is less about, you know, making it so that the Governor isn't in a position to either sign it or let it go or to veto it. Our concern on the, on the second floor is to make sure that we do the work with the people of Colorado to get the best possible bill to the Governor's desk, to give them the best chance to be able to sign the bill.
But not to like lean on this too much, but I can only remember one other veto override vote in my time in the legislature, and I think that was a Dave Williams bill that kind of like accidentally made it to the Governor's desk, right? And then it came back, and the veto override failed. So, like, does, does that mean that you guys are starting to exercise this second-floor power responsibility for the first time? Or is it just that it hasn't happened in the past? Or like, why now?
I, certainly, the President offered the most obvious reason. It requires a two-thirds vote. And neither Democrats in the House nor the Senate own a two-thirds majority, so that it takes a bipartisan effort. The bill that was contemplated for a veto override was around social media use, and it was well-supported by both chambers. I think at the point the veto was made clear, there were discussions in the Senate, that's where the bill had originated, so it went to that chamber first, and then it made it to the House. And what I think my bill sponsor recognized is that members may have supported the policy, may have been fans of the policy, but the veto override vote was a different vote for them. And I think because of the Governor's analysis as well, and some of his concerns about the policy, it became more obvious to many of our members that there was more work to do here. It was a very difficult moment, I think, for both the House and the Senate, certainly the bill sponsors. Our bill sponsor made the decision not to bring it forward for a veto override vote, I think because he recognized the votes were not present in the chamber. What I do believe is that the, the policy will come back, and we will have the opportunity to continue to work on that, and I hope earn a signature from the Governor.
One big issue leaders chose not to send to the Governor was an effort to go after TABR. During the session, House Democrats introduced a resolution, and it would have directed the legislature's attorneys to sue over the constitutionality of TABR. That did not go anywhere. In fact, House leaders never even let it get to the chamber floor for what could have been a tough vote, and certainly, a lot of Republican pushback there. But McCloskey said just putting that idea on paper did start a conversation.
The member that brought it forward deeply believes that the best path to improving our world with TABR or changing our fiscal structure is through that lawsuit and overturning TABR. I think what came forward through the conversations that began with that resolution are conversations about other approaches and other ways that we could address some of the difficulties we're facing with TABR. This last fall, September, we received a forecast that surprised us and led to a $1.2 billion shortfall on our budget. And the surprise came that we saw a $600 million increase in Medicaid for long-term care services for our seniors, seniors who are in nursing facilities or on Medicaid receiving health care. That increase is going to continue.
McCloskey said she just thinks TABR is too rigid to accommodate changing demographics and needs in the state, in particular, an aging population.
Our inability to be flexible and recognize that is very problematic, just as inflation can grow one year in one sector. We've seen such an explosion in healthcare, for example, that that doesn't exactly mirror what is driving cost pressures for a lot of our services and programs in the state. So I think the, the resolution, it was a powerful conversation starter. I don't think it's the end of what folks are going to hear about TABR, either TABR reform or TABR, you know, how can we redefine our fiscal structure in a way that better meets the needs of our public?
Unfortunately, she did not give us the answer on that. She didn't say what Democrats might do with TABR. The reality is, they will have to go it alone. Republicans have said they aren't interested in making any changes to the amendment. They want Colorado's government to stick with the money it's allowed and give back the rest to taxpayers. Megan also asked Senator Coleman to weigh in on the topic of TABR reform.
If you're ruling out a lawsuit, that kind of leaves you going to voters who have not been very receptive to Democratic efforts to change fiscal rules in recent years. Where do you think they are in this? Do you think you have any chance of persuading the Colorado electorate to touch this amendment?
I would just ask just a real quick question. Raise your hand, it's fine if you don't, but raise your hand if you have an in-depth knowledge of what TABR is. Raise your hand. Great. Half the people in the room don't, half the people in the room do. And for those who don't, what we have to do is a better job of an awareness campaign about our current financial situation at the state of Colorado. We need the help of the voters to figure out how we not only do better with the money that we have, which again, to the Speaker's credit, who's, as an education champion, she has fought to make sure that we've had education funding in our state. We come in with this billion-dollar deficit, but we leave the state legislative session with additional $256 million for public education in the state of Colorado. So the part of the battle is making sure we do better with the money that we have, but the other part is communicating to the public in Colorado that we do need additional resources, and especially more so now than ever before with some of the federal cuts that we are seeing or could be seen more of here in the state of Colorado. So I think we have to do a better job of truly communicating.
From tax policy, the conversation eventually shifted to Senate Bill 3. This was the Democrats' big gun bill of the session. Polis has already signed it into law, and it would make Colorado one of the most difficult places in the country to buy certain semi-automatic firearms. This policy changed a lot throughout the legislative process. It shifted from an outright ban to a vetting approval process to purchase these types of guns. Now, it is expected to face legal challenges, especially given a new U.S. Supreme Court standard known as the Bruin Test. That test requires any new gun laws states pass to be consistent with the historical tradition of firearm regulation. Jesse asked Democratic leaders about this.
Just a gut check, or do you guys think this is going to hold up in court with Bruin?
Look, I would say we'll leave that up to the courts to determine whether or not it's going to be held up. Our responsibility is to work with our members and the community to figure out how to make sure we have greater public safety here in the state of Colorado. And so for me, I truly believe that it's something that we'll continue to work on and have these conversations. And I just want to make sure that we continue to plug in with the community on how we do better on implementing our policies so that we ultimately have better public safety in the state.
This has long been a divisive topic in Colorado politics. But as Democrats have gained and maintained power really since 2018, they've taken a lot more action to pass stricter gun laws. McCloskey explained her vote and how she was trying to balance things. She said she ultimately took direction from the people in her district. She represents six counties in the mountains, half are conservative, and half trend blue. I think it's notable to remember that McCloskey has not backed a traditional assault weapon ban. A proposal to do that failed twice before at the State House.
I do think Senate Bill 3 was a significant step for us. We had brought bills forward that had been both controversial and, I don't think, fully supported by Democrats in the building these last couple of years. Senate Bill 3 was the, you know, ultimate compromise in helping to drive a permit and training process that allows, I'll say, responsible gun owners to own these AR or AK guns, but in a way that we hope promotes more safety. And with, you know, the process that is now required, I hope that process screens out those that would use these weapons for harm.
Even though lawmakers didn't pass a straight-up ban on so-called assault weapons, Republicans and Second Amendment advocates say the recent laws is still really egregious with the hurdles and barriers it creates for people to exercise a constitutional right. So for this topic, I would say stay tuned. This fight over the policy is not close to ending. And to a question that's keeping many of us who follow Colorado politics up at night, I'd say for me, it is not keeping me up at night, but maybe it is for my editor. I am curious, though, will there be a special session this summer or in the fall? Coleman and McCloskey agreed with Polis that it would take a lot for lawmakers to come back for a special session this year. For one thing, there's no money for it. Lawmakers grab the funding they usually set aside for a special session to help balance the budget. That said, I don't think we're out of the woods here just because there isn't money set aside. The budget, though, is the thing everyone's really watching here, and whether cuts made in Washington, D.C. could require lawmakers to rush back and patch holes in our own state finances. There's only so much balancing the Budget Committee would be able to do on their own without input from everyone else in the legislature. If we are back at the Capitol for a special session, rest assured, you know where to find out all about it here on Purpleish. That's it for this episode. Purpleish is a production of member-supported Colorado Public Radio and the Colorado Capitol News Alliance. The CCNA is a collaboration between KUNC News, Colorado Public Radio, Rocky Mountain PBS, and the Colorado Sun, with support from news outlets throughout the state. Funding for the alliance is provided in part by the Corporation for Public Broadcasting. I'm Benta Berkland. Our producer is Stephanie Wolf, and our editor is Megan Verley. Sound design and engineering by Shane Rumsey. Our theme music is by Brad Turner. Special thanks to the Colorado Sun for partnering on this episode, and to the technical crew at DU who recorded this event. Purpleish will be back in your feeds in two weeks. Subscribe now so you don't miss an episode. This is Purpleish from CPR News and the Colorado Capitol News Alliance.